I know. It's usually I don't get the opportunity to do that very often.
Hello there, Jessica.
Hi there, Larry.
Okay. Is this your stuff?
Somebody always wants to show pictures.
If I meant it to be a good...
All right, thank you. I'd like to call over and convene the whole meeting Monday, March 4th, about 7:08 PM. Take the call over, please. Member Warren?
Here.
Member Keesley?
Here.
Member Saretta?
Here.
Member Foltz?
Here.
Member Fonte?
Here.
Member Peter?
Here.
Okay, first up, we have Finance and Property. Chairman Ware?
Okay. So, last week, we had, and we did talk about this earlier in the year, about our generator, and we've gotten some, we put some bids out, and last week, we didn't have a meeting because of it, and things do not happen when we need electricity. So Laura, is there anything that you'd like to say? I know we have some bids out, and we've actually reached out to your consultant to see what he thought about a couple of those bids, and you've received information back, and actually, the number is a lot less than this at this point also.
Right, when the agenda was put out, we usually had an amount of $350,000 there just to be safe. Now that some of that information has come back, we're looking at closer to $250,000. So there's kind of two pieces to this. One would be to authorize the contract, if, you know, choose the lowest and best bidder. The other piece would be to go ahead and appropriate that $250,000. It's something we talked about in this year's project, but we didn't actually budget it because we didn't have that good information back from the consultants and fitters yet.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I was just going to ask, I know there's natural gas and diesel, and the question I have, I know probably don't know the specs yet, if it's diesel, I was wondering how many hours does it run for? And if we have to... Forty-eight. Forty-eight, so if we need to replenish it, do we have a stockpile somewhere? We know we... Okay, we can't use natural gas because of pressure? Yes. That's correct. We can't modify that? That's correct. Because it's a lot cheaper to have natural gas. It is a lot cheaper to have natural gas, but what we're looking at doing here with this generator is to provide power to the entire building. One of the reasons for that, we started working on this project back in 2017, is that this facility is designated with FEMA as an emergency operations center, in the event of, say, a tornado devastate our town, this is where the action is coming. So this building needs to have power. Since I've been here, we've suffered a number of power outages, mostly during the summer. This last one was the first time it had really happened in the winter. We were unfortunate that the generator that we do have, that's in the police garage, blew in addition, and it went out. Now, this was a generator used to run just the police department and dispatch operations. So what we had to do is bring in some portable generators, and was grateful to the fire department for the quick action they took to make sure that this building, as far as the police department goes, was able to function. It still wasn't nice and warm and cozy, it was still fifty, fifty degrees up here and forty-six down below, but they continued to work through those conditions. We were out without power for about seventeen, eight hours, here before it was restored. So it's very important to the community that we're able to put this together. The bids came in better than we thought. We have a firm as a consultant to us in Cleveland, and they'll be evaluating those bids and determining which one is the lowest and best. How old was that generator? The generator in the police garage is twenty-three years old.
The other...
And it's in, yes, it's in the enclosed facility.
The other item that's backed up here at City Hall besides the safety aspect is our IT hub. Our servers are all behind lock and key in the police department, which is great, but, you know, those need power to run, and that runs the IT for the entire city.
Do you guys have battery backups in case that fails? Do you have a battery system? We do have battery backups, but that's for just a very limited time. And it works great if the power's only out for maybe an hour, gives everybody a chance to shut down their systems. But even the six power outages that I've been through, power went out for several hours. And during the day, that means, you know, we can't process water, utility bills, can't answer basically anything that people would call in and want to do.
One other point, too, you know, we've seen this happen quite frequently, like when we had the last power, you know, people that are looking for shelter, whether it's like for a tornado or, you know, due to heat, we can open up City Hall and we have a generator. There's not usually a high volume of people that are looking for heat, but in the event that, you know, in this case, what we had to do is contact the churches. So we had three churches that opened up their doors, which was nice. But what we can do, once we get this generator replaced, is just have the City Hall open, because it is our command center in the event that there is an emergency. So this is the place that has, you know, to keep our...
Okay. All right, so I'm moving to let them get it.
Next week's agenda, correct?
Yeah.
We need to amend the amount on that. Well, it's not to exceed $350,000, and we believe we can come in around $250,000, so it still works. In fact, this doesn't need to be passed by. No, no, it's just committee and put it out next week.
And we'll read both the contract and appropriations next week on Thursday.
All right, moving on.
Okay, this is just amending the professional services agreement between the city and State Bell to include code enforcement, and we want that to be a best thing as well. So initially, we were just kind of evaluating and then seeing what kind of things that we wanted them to do, correct?
Yeah, in the initial contract, we had asked them to give us a price for what it would be, and they quoted us about $40 an hour. And then, working with Laura, we were able to go back and negotiate a lower amount, and, you know, a requisite minimum number of hours. If it goes beyond that, that's great, but at least we have, that's what we're looking at tonight is to establish that. And they have somebody that they've hired onboard already, they've been training him, he's been using some of the stuff that we've had a few phone calls, I think there was a home in the southeast side of town that was an ongoing construction issue, and, you know, we sent this individual out to investigate and get the process going.
That's great. Okay, any questions? We'll put that on the agenda for next week as well, under emergency. And then the last one, look, Dominic.
MSW. Flight.
Laura, are we just appropriating the funds for the flags, for any donations that we get? Have a live item in for your input.
We are, we've created a live item to receive that money. So far, we've received $9,500 in donations.
And I had another commitment for $1,500. So the total, we collected, how much, $95,000?
$95,000.
And so I'm waiting for one more thousand to come in, and then another $1,500 from another person. And then I got an email from a lady, that her husband was a veteran who's passed, and she'd like to make a donation in his behalf. And so I reached out to them, just waiting to hear back.
That's great.
So should be enough to get us the flags purchased and get this number on.
Thanks, Dominic.
Thank you, thanks to the audience, Larry helped me on that, too. So thank you, Larry.
Okay. That's it for me.
All right, Community Economic Development, Chairman Keesley.
Yes, we, this is a resolution we'd like to send over to the commission to see if they would recommend back to us a text amendment to our term survey code regarding outdoor seating at restaurants. Currently, it's a little restrictive as far as it's based upon their outside seating capacity shall not exceed 25% of the restaurant seating capacity. And we'd like it to be a little more broad-based, open up, they can talk about it, you know, review with the owners, the stakeholders, and decide what's the best fit for the area, what's the best fit for the restaurant, what's the best fit for us, as opposed to this is narrowing it down to 25%, and you don't have any other options, correct?
Yes, and we should keep in mind that when that was passed and put into effect, the nature of restaurants was a lot different than they are today. And if you study the restauranting trend, it's, the experience is more outdoor dining. And, you know, we feel that if you go around the city and take inventory of the restaurants and what they're doing, they're already running up against and beyond that limit. So what we wanted to do is, what we're recommending here, council, the council can recognize a little bit of planning. Basically, a system whereby the limitation is more about the property size that you own. So for instance, we have law firms up there that have acquired a lot of land around where they built, good for them, and they have a lot of outdoor seating. Their outdoor seating should really be a function of market economics. One, how many people can you serve and give a good quality service to? And if you can, and that's 100 people, well, good for you, and you're able to do that and provide that kind of rewarding dining experience. From our standpoint, we're looking at the fire safety side, and so that would still be governed part of it. For instance, you had outdoor dining that was fenced in, and there was some type of a panic, you would want people to be able to get out. So the fire code would regulate that. The State Liquor Board regulates the service of alcohol in the outdoor facility, so there are limitations in regards to that as well. But to just put an arbitrary number of 25%, you know, if you put a place that is a restaurant rose, that has no indoor seating capacity, but yet there's picnic tables outside that, so there would be a violation. And we could pick any restaurant up and down Main Street throughout the city that would find that to be the case. So it seems to me that it's something that's old, it's antiquated, and if you want to get the type of, you know, restaurants that you want around here, you're going to have to deal with some type of outdoor seating.
I agree. Anybody else?
Yeah, I think, you know, as we get the DRD organized, and maybe potentially the downtown entertainment district, I mean, I would think eventually we should be able to have some flexibility with all of that, so we definitely have to have one with any other events.
That is very good, that is true. The city is looking at an entertainment district along with the downtown redevelopment districts, and the idea is to get more people on the street, walking from place to place, and they see the outdoor dining, and it makes it a more desirable place to come to.
Well, I think you should emphasize the fact that what we're really after is job growth here in the community. Passively.
Can't hear you.
What we're after is job growth in the community. And I happened to stop at one of my favorite carryout locations, I can't munch my waistline's complaint, but I posed a question to the manager. I said, "If you could have four or five picnic tables outside for some seasonal dining, would that help your business?" He said, "Yes, it really would." And I said, "Well, stay tuned." But the point is, is that he might put somebody else on, that's another taxable individual who's working here, he goes again to sort of my mantra, one job for 100 square feet, commercial real estate. And so I think this is worth pursuing. And again, as Pat has indicated, as long as we don't compromise safety, keep working on it, see what happens.
All right. I'll put on the agenda for three or second on. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, Stream Alley, Chairman Fonte.
Okay, the first thing we're talking about is the cooperative purchasing program with ODOT, and this is basically, that we just have more power, you know, working with them, possibly buy salt, snowplows, miscellaneous other items, materials. And that would be on emergency, because it's always kind of the essence to buy off-season. And that one is the agenda for the emergency next week. And the second item B, this is a big one for anybody that lives around Weber, that's going to be a total redo, almost a little over a half mile footage. It's going to be eight foot of, I'm sorry, eight inches of asphalt, six inches of stone, so we're going to take it all the way down. 1.1 million is an estimate, it might be a little bit more than that. There are going to be 14 catch basins, curb gutter, you know, storm sewer. It's going to be regular asphalt, you know, so it's going to be a total redo. And it's going to be 2,650 feet. So the money's coming from three funds, the capital, street fund, capital sewer fund, and storm sewer. So it's going to be 1.1 million. So that's going to be on emergency, be a nice addition to the city. I'm going to get that on the agenda, and it will be an emergency.
Rob, it's all you two, sorry. You'll need to have that on the construction list, all right?
Hope to move forward, I'd like to advertise early as next Thursday at 14, do it until 29, and get it in this summer as fast as possible. Get it out on the streets, there's a lot of contracts still to work, take advantage of inner and deep, so, early summer.
Offside, Howard?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, water sewer, rubbish, committee, Chairman Saretta.
Rubbish. This is to receive bids for the Northfield Avenue sanitary sewer replacement project, Knoll Street to East Hill. Rob, you wanted to show your expertise on this, go ahead and explain.
Yeah, actually, we've got about 1,650 linear feet of sanitary sewer in that area. We looked at possibly lining, but it's just too far down. It's old clay pipe, it's got some dunes, it's just not flowing. And so we're going to get that out of there, replace that. And we also have three funds to come up with that $750,000 estimate. And while we're in there, we're just to know the area, there's really no drainage, the water just lays on the side of the roads and in front yards. So we're going to install a storm sewer system, curb and gutter, and then again, break the whole batch of asphalt paper.
And this was budgeted?
This was budgeted. It's like the last project, this was absolutely in a budgeted framework.
Any questions on that? We'll move forward with that, then. There are no questions.
Up on emergency, please, indicate on the streets.
Get the bids in. The next item, then, is purchase of water treatment chemicals, or city drinking water. This is also, if I'm not mistaken, and is the typical thing that we do every time. Any comments on anything there?
No.
I'm going to put that on, looks like that's on notice also.
Table C.
Table C, we're ready for that. Okay, that completes that. Next up, Park and Rec, Chairman Foltz.
Thank you. Everyone has your packet of rate proposal for our pool. As we know, a pool is a great amenity for a camp, and we've made some great improvements the last three years, I think $400,000 in putting water, updating the pool house as far as mechanical room and concrete around the surrounding pool area. So it's something we're proud of, but obviously, we have some other things to address, especially the entrance locker room area, concession area, and possibly some other amenities that just up for slide, and just replace some of the water features that have been there probably 15 years now, which doesn't seem that long, it's kind of quick with some. So I guess what we're asking for here, in the administration way, obviously, they proposed this, appreciate their work on this. If you go through the rate structure, the last time we did a capital rate increase was 2016. And the biggest thing, when you're looking at disordinance from 2019, is the elimination of just the school district as far as seasonal passes in a rate structure. So I think they've done a good job, the Pat and Laura have looked at this, and will put it in way in a little bit, but there's the modest increases to daily rate and the Saturday, Sunday rate, from a dollar to $2 on Saturday, Sunday, then after 5:00 PM goes up a dollar. If you look at the seasonal memberships, modest increases there from vacant residents, I think the single goes up $8, the family goes up $18, the buddy pass $13, senior $4 than three years ago. What fluctuates a little bit, when you look at the non-resident, kind of combined just school district versus non-resident, some of them went up, some of them went down, depending on the category of single family buddy or senior. Not to go through all that, even look at it. I think the main thrust of this is, we need to increase the rates and really start putting some capital away, you know, fund. As we know, we collaborate with the Y as far as the management pool, providing school meet lessons and so forth, but we're calling it a pool capital reserve account, and 20% of these dollars is going to go there so we can actually plan for these future renovations. And we say the user should pay for it, but the Y's agreed to share some of their profits and hopefully get some other grants or some other avenues that Pat can work out, or Laura for administration and other things. So, you know, we're all proud of the pool, we have to make sure that we do have a fund in place to address future capital needs. And with that, I'll turn things over to Pat and Laura. One other thing, I don't know if we have to amend it yet, but we also want to look at the management agreement. We just got this tonight, so I'm not looking to pass this on emergency this evening. We can have two readings, three readings by the end of month, we have a special reading, but I think that's, I'd like to debate that to the rest of council with that. Pat, you'd like to weigh in more?
Yeah, thank you for that lead in. The management agreement is something that had been under negotiation for a few months. As always, towards the end, there's always a few little tweaks to get to, and so that just was finalized today.
Mr. Administrator, if you would, just for, for the record, if you would, go ahead and...
Make a motion to amend the agenda to...
Yes.
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda here. I'll make a motion to amend the agenda here tonight to include the management agreement between City of North Canton and the YMCA of Central South County.
Second? All favor. I propose. Motion carries.
Thank you. Special order, Eric. So as we're wrapping that up, just as quick history, as you know, we rewrote the agreement between the Y and North Canton last year, and restructured that to try to provide incentive to operate the pool as efficient and effective as possible. We think that worked out very well. We tried that on a one-year arrangement, so the Y was interested in an arrangement that would be a little bit longer duration, we were too. And so we tied that negotiation into some capital investment in the pool, in the pool house as you come in, is the primary need. And we felt that if all parties contributed about a third of the cost, the Y, city, the users, over a period of the time, we could accumulate that, come up with some plans, get an architect, get it all ready to go, and in addition to acquiring this additional funding needs that we're looking for, put us in position where we actually can point to something and, you know, put a board up at the pool and show that, hey, this is what's coming. We cleaned up some of the language in the contract, on a one-year contract that was always referring to specific dates. When it would open with a five-year contract, we didn't wanna go through and point out every single date for each of the five years, so we specified that, you know, the pool will be open based on dates that are on file with the office of the administrator as provided by the Y's. We'll be able to communicate that out to the residents, pool users, you know, as we get closer to each season. But all in all, that was pretty much the gist, lengthening the contract, getting the binding, do something for capital improvements on the, on the, on pool, and cleaning up some of the language.
Okay, I like, I like how you're looking ahead here, to see how we're gonna handle this. This is a great event to our city here, and you'd have to, outside of us in Minerva, we were talking, there is no pools. You have to go to country clubs, belong to those, which are expensive with that. But I like the fact that you're looking at what people like, you know, I mean, it's important right now, splash parks are very important, slides are very important kind of thing. So I think, you know, based on where other pools are and everything, you know, I think you can justify this, this rate increase for not, not just to rate, to increase the rate, but to actually look ahead and make this a better place, and thus move forward for better things. And again, the other places you can go to a pool, like a country club, are a lot more expensive than that. So I think the pool's a great event, I wanna make sure that it's maintained and better for migrant children that will go there. Thank you, appreciate the movement on that.
Lauren, you wanna weigh in on some other?
Sure, just kind of on the dollar side of things. The way that we came up with the rates, it wasn't random, and we created a model, I will, with Joe and my department, to create a model and put in, you know, if we use this rate, how much would it generate? Because like we said, we wanted to have some extra dollars to put aside. Last year, the pool net income was about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, so the city got half of that, that was sixty thousand dollars. Sounds like a lot of money, but when you pay for utilities, routine maintenance, replacing the palm tree and the splash park, the things that were budgeted for this year comes in right at about sixty thousand dollars. So we were basically breaking even, and that was our best year in three years. So in order to have a little extra revenue, we looked at what we could do with rates. The one thing that we really heard from the Y was that their biggest demand is on the weekends, Saturday and Sunday, so for the first time, we looked to do a different day pass rate on the weekend, to, you know, kind of supply and demand, just react to that. So we looked that up. And using the model of, you know, similar attendance to what we had this year, we believe we can generate another hundred thousand dollars over three years, which can go right back into the pool facilities and hopefully add some additional features for users. We did go from the three tiers to the two, as Doug mentioned. That took us from twenty-four separate rates that we had to keep track of down to sixteen rates. So I think that'll help lessen confusion and just administrative passes for the Y as well. But we did keep the rate structure pretty much the same. We looked at the number of day passes that it would take to break even on the single rate, and we base everything on that.
Did they ever look, did they ever look at having some kind of group? I mean, somebody came and asked me about this, I think it was a really good idea. Let's say I've got kids who wanna have a birthday party, and there's like fifteen to twenty kids. Is there any kind of thought that we'd put in that they would, like a group rate which includes like hot dog, blah, 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 and up at, for this like party rate kind of thing? That way you can get twenty people in, and they're all already bought, you know, hot dog, and so, that's just something somebody asked me about, and, and we haven't really kind of looked at that, but that might be something that might interest some folks who wanna have, you know, a little get together like a birthday party for their kids or something like that, so just a thought.
Can I have one other quick addition? So, do we split the concessions? Is that all done?
That all goes back into the net income. They run the concession program, but what are the rate names, it goes back?
We had setups that go right to the bottom line when we split that.
Because, because I would think if there were me running it, I would wanna be working the crowd gently, and instead of them coming up, we just service them, like how if you're out at an inclusive restaurant or something, they come around and service you, take orders, and then bring it out.
You think this is sample?
I'm just saying, it seems to me that we could probably quadruple our sales, where we would just go out to the people that like to relax.
Well, keep in mind that this is one of the few facilities where you're allowed to bring in your own food. So it's not so much always about, what are they serving, the right type of food or whatever, it's about, you know, bringing a picnic lunch and enjoying that day.
Yeah, there'd always be picnic lunch people, like, you know, healthier, but some people just like to roll with it and spend a lot of money.
We just added one of that point, that this really worked out well since the merger, and really, it was council and the administration that started this, merging the Y, Mark Sretta, you were, you were on that committee when we started this, Doug. Is the safety aspect, because the standards that the YMCA has for pool safety, they are unmatched. And the challenge that we had as a city is that we are not managing pools year-round. We were managing the pool just for a few months out of the year, and trying to train and maintain and manage the staff is a real challenge, but the Y does it seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. I think maybe with the exception of Christmas, right? Yeah, but they do an excellent job, so even when the children are going into the deep end, they have to pass the test. So now everybody's allowed into the deep end, and they just really do an excellent job making sure that they're safe. So that was a big, big issue, you know, we were just limited as far as our training with the safety staff, the part timers, so that's worked out really well. Good job.
Appreciate it. Any other questions from council? I had one, family rate, it's been a while since, yeah, family rate. Is that two adults or two members living, adult members living, and then what, two children or?
It's two adults of the same household, and then any dependent children.
Any, so it could be five kids. So really, when you look at this, you know, the family is gonna be a hundred and ninety-two dollars for the season, and your daily is now gonna be ten dollars, weekend's eleven. It just tells you, as we've always said, by your pool membership, you know, if you go more than three or four times, more than four to go, provide a family, that's a good one for private youth and young parents.
Mayor Halden, he's my family, that's, that's two days worth of, so.
That's right. You probably have a great, a nice time yourself right there, and make a merit of that.
Too much water in there. But I think the Y pushes for those memberships, I mean, if they get a discount for YMCA, you know, people that quote YMCA cards.
It's worked out very well.
Well, we did, we looked at other city pools in the area, even out, you know, three or four counties surrounding us, and how their rates go, and a lot of people are starting to charge per child on the family, instead of just a full rate. But we still have, it's two point one times the single rate, so, kind of a benefit to our residents that way.
Well, like I said, I appreciate our first reading next week, we can, you know, have a few more, if we want to public the way we'd like to, but thank you for the hard work on this, and any other questions, we can bring them back up at the later meetings, so.
Hold on. It's asking for emergency plots for the rates.
It's okay, we just, okay. All right, I just wanna have one more reading.
No worries. Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Before the committee concludes, would it consider formally, through a voice vote, amending the agenda for the appropriation ordinance for the generator?
Oh, for the generator?
Yes, there's, there's an addition there. The, we had legislation to purchase, but we hadn't had the appropriation. The finance director came up with those funds today, initially it was the legislation, you know, more than three hundred and fifty thousand, and the bids were opened last week, the number now for the appropriation is two hundred and fifty, but we should amend the agenda because this was not included in the agenda that initially had gone out. I know we talked about it, but I don't recall.
Disordinance here?
A voice vote to amend for...
Yeah, I forgot to ask on that.
Okay. All right. Give us a second to amend the agenda to include this, under Finance and Properties, section one A.
Second?
Call the roll.
You don't have a voice vote to amend.
All favor.
Aye.
Most, motion carries.
I'd like to put that on council agenda next week.
Next week, that's right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim, I appreciate that.
And Mr. President, I mean, we were kind of at the end of our agenda, there was a matter that I was gonna ask if the council would consider amending their agenda for, the council to appoint two of its members to the CRA Housing Council?
That's gonna do that.
Okay.
Is that a next step? Yeah, no, the next meeting.
Oh, the next meeting, okay, that's great, thank you.
Okay. That concludes the committee. Motion to adjourn.
Agreed.
Second? All favor.
Aye.
Most, she carries, we adjourn. Call the order, the special council meeting Monday, March fourth, two thousand nineteen, seven forty P.M. Mark would like to lead this. Please, right? Do you kick?
Lord, thank you for bringing us here this evening, the wonderful bodies and minds that you have given us here. Help us enlighten, to do your work, watch over our community, help us to encourage the young, teach us how to assist the needy, help us to understand the needs of the retired and elderly, help us to think positive in those times that are negative. Give us the strength to, well, we first wanna thank you for the wonderful community that you have given us. Give us the strength to keep it as good as you would like to have it, and even better as we move into the future. You guys stand in prayer. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tim, call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Member Foltz.
Here.
Member Warren.
Here.
Member Saretta.
Here.
Member Fonte.
Here.
Member Heasley.
Here.
Member Peters.
Here.
And member Revolt.
Here.
Seven in the presence.
All right, thank you. Before we get into it, I wanna turn it over to Mayor Halden, he's got an announcement.
Yes, we have, in the State of North Canton, we have what's called the Building and Board of Standards Appeals. And so that board, what they do is they will hear any appeal, that if somebody is going to apply to the planning commissioner, they want to appeal ordinance of the city or a particular building standard, like for example, if they wanted to build a garage, but they would need a variance, then they would have to take that variance before the, what we call the Board of Zoning Appeals. And so we have volunteers that serve on that board, and they meet the fourth Tuesday of every month, and we had a vacancy on the board, and so we needed somebody to serve on that, and we asked BJ Boyden, who's in the back of the room. BJ, I feel like mine's standing up. And BJ has her husband, Dustin, her son, Jaden. Jaden proposed to worship him, fifth grade, right? And so we appreciate your service on that, BJ, and it's really important, that planning commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals is really a very important position, because, you know, they're making the final decisions really as far as the interpretation of the policies and the legislation that the council sets. So thank you for serving, BJ.
Thank you, BJ. Okay. Get into it. For your consideration, may I have a motion and a second to approve as presented? City council today, the whole meeting minutes, February fourth, two thousand nineteen, city council meeting minutes, February eleventh, two thousand nineteen.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Most, motion carries. All right, at this time, if you wish to address council, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Melanie J. Roll, three zero eight, four each, northwest, North Canton. Tonight I want to speak on the topic of audits. About, end of last year, I talked to Ms. Brown about audits, and she was able to give me some information and clarify some questions that I had, and I appreciate that. She probably will have to clarify some of this, these comments as well. It was my understanding that the city no longer has the state do a complete audit, and she verified that. I'm not sure whether twenty fourteen was the last year that the state did an audit, or the first year that the, it was outsourced to another entity. When that is outsourced, the audit is only of the financial side of the city. I think there's also been a performance audit done some time ago, and what I'm proposing is a legislative audit. That would look at the legislative side, what could be improved. We could also keep the financial audit, with, I think you said it had two more years on that contract. If we look at the last four or five years, there's been a lot of changes in personnel in the city, the permit office, that clerical person, planning, that clerical person, they, no longer with the city. There's been a lot of changes in the administrative assistance in this building, the clerk's position has changed twice. So I think there's been a lot of institutional memory that has been lost. That could be good or bad. For me, it's usually not good. So what I'm proposing is, in addition to what you have in the contract for the financial side of the audit, do a legislative audit. This would perhaps be a good time, we have Safe Built, which is just under contract, we will probably have a new clerk, and some other new positions that have been established. Why not start with best practices? I think it would be advantageous. So I'm recommending a legislative audit, and it would be interesting to hear what you folks had to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. That's it? Hold on, Larry.
You didn't ask for more.
Yeah.
You're gonna get it.
I'm sure.
Larry Tripp, one one two seven, East Maple, North Canton. Tonight I speak before the city council with the likes of about seventy-five years of government experience. One would expect to see and hear a well-oiled legislative side of the city government. No, what we're getting is exactly what the future held when the law director controlled, council form of government was established. A machine right now, just barely running as far as council moves. Yet, you remain silent, clueless, and in the past, even praising the works and actions A machine right now, just barely running as far as council moves. Yet, you remain silent, clueless, and in the past, even praising the works and actions of the law director and council president, regardless of how crude their words or actions may have been. Council, your failures in the past do not nullify your purpose in the future. Let that sink in for a second. Folks, look at the agendas for the city council meeting of January 28th and the canceled meeting of February 25th. Both contain glowing errors, with the February 25th agenda particularly troublesome. Does the law director not know city council meetings are held the second and fourth Monday of each month, and committee meetings of the whole, the first and third Mondays of each month? Certainly not the works of a professional. Look at ordinance 3-2019, Main Street Business. I recognize, I know very little about the ordinance process. However, I would question, how does an ordinance leave the chambers of a meeting of the whole on January 14th in one manner, and then appear on the January 28th council meeting agenda and vote upon with entirely different language? Believe this law director still believes they're in Everhard Road in North Canton, Ohio. Everhard Road Northwest. Yes, I've heard some rumblings about that this ordinance may be scrapped and reworked by an outside service, not at what cost to the city? Is someone finally beginning to recognize the law director's shoddy work? Why do I watch a video of the February 6th Planning Commission meeting with regards to 1266 South Main Street, feral pools and spas? Twice during this meeting, I heard commission members express that this matter was being reviewed in accordance with the new Main Street legislation. I believe the question was also raised during this meeting as to whether, again, this was reviewed in accordance with Main Street Business Legislation. Then you heard an affirmative yes. Why would the law director, in attendance as a legal advisor, not advise the planning commission that this ordinance had not been yet finalized? Were the planning commission members victimized by lack of legal advice? Why the problem of filling the vacancy of the city clerk, of the council clerk's position? Is it perhaps the word is out that working on the legislative side of North Canton government, there is only one way to do something, and that is the law director's way? I feel quite sorry for the new council clerk inheriting what may be a real mess with its many unknowns in working in close proximity with the law director. Mr. Mayor, I don't know where to direct this question, but there have been, has there been any consideration as to an audit of council records, legislation, et cetera? Surely there has to be some questions in this area. I could see three very definite benefits by an audit. A, if a good or outstanding audit grade is met, there may be many critics, including myself, silenced. If poor performances indicated, well, one half of the problem has already been terminated, leaving no alternative but to terminate the other half. C, a good training tool for any new clerk in establishing priorities in his or her learnings process. Mark Twain once said, "The secret of getting ahead is getting it started." It appears the administrative side of North Canton government is well on its way to productivity. Now let's jump the legislative side with an audit. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Larry. Chuck? You're on.
Chuck Osborne, 307 Federal Street, Southeast, North Canton, Ohio. I'm going to pick up where the mayor left off here regarding the ZBA. You're three months late, Mayor. Mr. Griffith told me way back in December at the last meeting, he was gone.
But he did not submit a letter of resignation until just recently.
People should be communicating. He told me he was getting married and leaving that city.
He doesn't.
As a result, the last ZBA meeting had to be canceled because we didn't even have a court. Only two of the five members showed up. This also happened a year ago. We had five advocates, attorneys. This room was full, and we didn't have a court, and we had to cancel. Again, we don't have time for the appointments. Now, your own staff members suggested to me what other communities do. They have alternates, number one. And number two, they give them a little stipend for showing up for the meeting. In addition to these two meetings where there was no court, we've had numerous meetings when you have just the minimum show up. So the advocate needs to know that they have to convince 100% of the membership before they get approval. So again, lay this all back on you. We need to have people who are incentivized, I guess, to use Mr. Saretta's word he likes to use, that they'll show up, they're going to get at least a meal out of it. So I'll leave that. We've had that problem. My main focus tonight was on city council minutes, and I've talked about it before. For the last four and a half years, we have not been putting the minutes on antecedent archival paper, on numbered paper. We're not putting them into the minute books. We've actually got three different kinds of formats going on now. We've got the former clerk's way, to stick them in pen effects file folders, and now we have this new way with the court reporter. The city charter says, "The clerk of council shall keep an accurate and complete journal of all proceedings of council authenticated by the clerk of council signature and have custody of all laws, ordinances, resolutions by council," and on and on and on. The last sentence there says, "During the absence or disability of the clerk of council, council shall appoint someone to perform all the duties of that office." I haven't heard that formally happened. We just let it follow the law director. And the law director, I guess, should be signing what the court reporter transcribes. We have no city official attesting to this, just a court reporter. So we're not creating a permanent record here that's going to be around 50, 150 years. So that's that. Regarding minutes again, we have numerous minutes that are not posted on the city's website. I just happened to pick March 4th of 2014, just to go back and create a connection here for you to compare. This is the minutes of that meeting five years ago. Mrs. Keesling was shaking her head at me here a few weeks ago, saying, "Oh, no. I did not, my first act as president of council was not resigning." So I'll hand this out to council. She did, in fact, resign. And here's another interesting fact. Here's the minutes of this March 4th, 2014 meeting. Council has never approved this. I've gone through six months after the meeting. You guys have never approved this meeting. And here's what's interesting. Five months after this meeting, a council clerk that we hired is attesting that she's reviewed it, but I think her language is, "I have listened to the audio to compare these minutes for the accuracy." She doesn't follow up and say, "They are accurate."
You've got 30 seconds, Chuck.
I know, you don't want to hear it. We never do want to hear it.
Well, you only get five minutes. Everyone else, just letting you know.
And then lastly, this is a, I'll send around to you a little nasty gram I got from the law director when I asked for minutes. And are we actually paying this gentleman almost a six-figure income to write this kind of garbage, just to harass people? Unbelievable. So I'll stop there.
Thank you, Mr. Osborne. I appreciate your comment.
Thank you. Here's the minutes that have never been approved from five years ago.
Thank you, Mr. Osborne. Your time is up.
Here's an example of appropriation of ordinance.
Please take your seat.
I'm working on it. I'm working on it.
Please take your seat, Mr. Osborne.
Here's the nasty gram.
Mr. Osborne, I can have you move. You can take your seat right now. Mr. Osborne, I will respond to your last point of your public comment. I was copied on that email, that email response to your public records request. It was professional and it cited case law, very informative to you. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, it included what you needed to do to make it right.
I'm sorry?
I thought it was very professional and informative.
There was no reason for it.
Thank you, Mr. Osborne. Anyone else wishing to address council, please step forward, state your name and address for... Last chance. Okay, we will move on to full business. All right, may I have a motion and a second to read my title ordinance number 2-19?
Sure.
Second? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
In ordinance amendment, Chapter 139, Department of Engineering, the City of North Canton's codified ordinances specifically, Section 139.03, Division of Permits and Inspection, to describe the restructuring of the Department of Engineering.
Thank you. Chairman of all?
Thank you. As we've discussed in previous readings, this particular amendment to this section aligns the codified ordinances with our current managing executive, the Director of Administration overseeing our building department.
Are there any questions? Not any other amendments?
See, none of... We have a mo, I moved that we adopt the reading of ordinance 2-19.
Your second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries for ordinance 2-19. All right, that concludes the legislative. We'll move to reports. Start with Engineer Grant.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, good news to report on the grant front. Last November, we had applied for a community development block grant to help pay for Seventh Street Northeast from North Main, east to Dogwood. And Patrick and I were down at the regional planning meeting on Thursday morning last week, and found out that we were successful. $249,500 for that. Here's a paper about that. So pretty good. We had that in the budget to have our matching fund there too. So we'll be in real good shape for that project, much needed in that area. Very similar to the Weber project, that'd be completely built, heard of better.
I suppose they mentioned that?
It's roughly 50/50, but this grant is $249,500. If the bid price is $10 over that or one, there's no percentage tie-in like some of the grants.
Very good. We're really looking forward to that project.
Yeah. It's the charity, it's not the pockets. They also have a travel area with the high school and all the parks. Yeah, looking forward to that.
Would that be the polymer one on Seventh Street since the school bus?
That's a good question. I didn't have it in the preliminary plans, but we can look at that.
Just because of baseball fields, future park activity?
Well, I'm trying to...
That would be one.
I'll take a look at the average daily traffic we have there, see if that means the extra expense.
Thank you.
In addition to the generator bids we talked about in the last meeting, the couple that we opened on Friday, we have three more bid opens. One was, we had seven bidders for the Watkinsboro Water Mine we had talked about. We had allocated $80 million for that, and good slate of bids. We had seven bidders. A low bid was $405,500, so well on budget, glad to see that. And our high bid was well over $600,000, so a nice slate of little bids, we're looking forward to see it. Another one we opened that morning was Price Park Path, Phase 2. Probably allocated $108,000 onto Stockard Fund and Park Fund. We had $108,000, and a little bid, again, seven bidders, $87,600. So a little bid there. The high around $42, so again, a nice range of high to low, or low to high. And then lastly, a bit of a surprise was our 2019 paving program. We had just four bidders, which is about it. We had put together a program, a good mix of streets and then a lot of alleys, a $80 million program. Our little bid was actually $617,000, so it wasn't real close. So did a little dissecting of what happened. And basically, it was all alley work. The last, two years ago, we did Avon's Way and another small alley. Last year, we just did two. This year, we're doing quite a bit more, kind of tidy up the area around Bar Tank One and St. Paul's and the other church there. And just that confined space really drove up the price. So, all in the funds intended, as the jury... I think we'll strike the alleys, like the recommend, that we just pull the alleys out of the program. That gets us down to our allocation of $500,000, a real close bid under, and proceed that way, but just doing the residential streets. And I talked to our contractor, he's more than willing to hold all those other non-alley related unit prices, so we can get that in and just go ahead with it in that format without doing the alleys.
Thank you, Rob. Good idea.
Strike the alleys, we have nothing to spare. I guess I'm not going to get into those gutters.
I really like all my... I guess with that... On the other hand, if you notice, we did get all the signings. We talked about previous meetings in South Main, never heard of it.
Yes. Oh, yes.
Looks good.
Yeah, it is.
The folks got everything.
Yes.
Thank you, Rob. Mr. Barrett?
No, we've had, we do, I'd like to introduce Pastor Steve Coe. He's actually the new pastor, right down the road here on East Maple Street. Pastor, if you'd mind standing up. So you can just let people know that he's at the Baptist Church, Trinity Baptist Church, right at the corner of Marquardt and East Maple. Been a parishioner there for years, and then recently began to pastor six months ago. So he had been with myself and also our council president, Jeff Peters, just looking to see what type of services the church can provide, because they have a lot of members of the church that want to serve the community. So we were just talking about different aspects that people can serve the community in the church, which is really nice. So we're glad to have him here.
Thank you. Can I get him on the list to come up and do the...
Barrett?
Yeah?
Yes.
So hit you on the list, Steve, to talk to...
Very good. That's all I have.
Yep, all right. Director of Administration?
Well, thank you. I'd like to acknowledge that we reached an agreement between the North Canton Area Chamber of Commerce and the City of North Canton, and working with the mayor on what it is that we really would like to see accomplished between the chambers' efforts and what we can't do here in the city, and trying to make that work a little bit better and give us a little bit more bang for that buck. Worked with Councilman Keesling on this as well. And in essence, what we're able to strike is that, when I look at it, and it's something that I've looked at with Dave's guidance over the last, you know, years that I've been here, but then also went back to when I served with Council with Dave, that there's one of the functions that the city just finds difficult to do because of the amount of manpower it would take, would be to get out and actually make contact on a regularly sustained basis with all the businesses in the city, regardless of whether they're members of the chamber or not, and provide that contact and that feedback as our agent. What can the city do for you? What are your issues? And to staff up to the level that they have for the volunteers that serve in that capacity and a couple of the paid staff, we couldn't begin to address that on our own, it would cost us way too much money. But... But, you know, they have a paid staff, they have a board of directors of fifteen people, and a number of them are activists in that organization that all can act in that capacity. So we've put together some deliverables as it related to that, and how many contacts do we want in addition to contacting a thousand existing businesses, your visited contact that are assisted in some way, new businesses contacted, you know, ones that are outside the area to try to get them to come in, facilitate networking and marketing events that are open to non-members, some educational sessions that would be held in collaboration with the City of North Canton, and other meetings that might be facilitated or participated on the city's behalf. So all these are measurable numbers that we can put in, and then there has to be a report every month as to where they are in that. One month might not be exactly one-twelfth of the number, but, you know, they could have the next month. But we'll get those reports then every month. Worked with Christina Wyrick as the incoming chairman of the board of the chamber, and she has an outstanding vision for the chamber, and this fits kind of into the direction that she was trying to take the chamber. So I think all around, that, you know, everything aligned just perfectly that for us to do this. So the mayor and the president of the chamber signed this agreement just a couple of days ago, so we've concluded that. It's for an amount that doesn't require council action, money's already been budgeted, so I just wanted to make everybody aware and work with the mayor and Marcia and I in the working room.
And the also, the other point too, I don't know if you'd mentioned this, Patrick, that we're going to have the city administrator, Patrick Surratt, on the board, which really we thought was an important, you know, a really important aspect of the contract, because it'll really open up communication between the city and the chamber, because as Christina had mentioned, she's the chair for the chamber, you know, so much of what the chamber does is involved with the city. And so back, Doctor Wyrick was the administrator, which was back in two thousand and one, I had served on the chamber board, and then that, for some reason, it just, you know, that position was no longer in place with the city administrator, so that'll work out really well, will be a big help to open up the lines of communication.
I had one to follow up. When you say contact, is it going to be phone or is it going to be person, is it going to be a combination, or I don't know if I caught that?
Yeah, it could be an existing visitation, it could be an in-person contact, and what we've asked for in reporting on that is to give us, you know, dates, who was contacted, who did the contacting, and they are allowing for, you know, some notes in there as to what the nature of the conversation was.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there was a meeting that I held here concerning the North Canton AED station beautification. We had put together a committee, some of the members are here in the audience, and we came in to talk about the landscaping phase of where they're at right now. So they had, initially, when we presented this at the special meeting, we held for a reboard member of Peters, some rough ideas of what they wanted to do, now we're at that point where we're actually picking stuff out. So I asked the North Canton Garden Club as well to participate in this and help us discern what it is that we want there. And principally, it would be along Sutton Avenue, Sutton Avenue and Maple Street. So they brought up some interesting choices of foliage and whatnot that our garden club has done some research on to figure out if that's something that would work for us and for our community. So just giving you an update that that's moving along. On an item that I think that you'll do before we leave, but I'll give you the backdrop now so you don't have, we don't have to explain it later, about the CRA Housing Council, just explaining that. So the CRA Housing Council handles the CRAs for the residential program that was in existence. We still have two CRA contracts in effect, but every so often, those terms of the people who serve on the CRA Housing Council expire, we're at that point. So two of the members that are on the council are appointed by the mayor, two are appointed by the legislative authority, that would be you. Your current two picks are members Foltz and members Surratt. Then one member is appointed by the Planning Commission, and then from those five individuals, they choose two residents to be appointed to the commission. The commission is going to meet March fourteenth. We have to approve or at least vote on the matters that are there and submit that prior to the deadline of March thirty-first. So I would like two of your members, whoever they're going to be, to be appointed to be able to attend that meeting on March fourteenth at six P M's. We thought in the evening might be more helpful to those of you who aren't able to get away during the week. So when you get to that point, Mr. President, you understand the backdrop of that. An announcement Saturday, June the first, twenty nineteen. There is a celebration, massive Thanksgiving for Richard DuSone, who's retiring as president of Walsh. All are invited, if you want to respond directly. We, the mayor had received a letter from the Meals on Wheels for Northeast Ohio, Meals on Wheels Week is March eighteenth through the twenty-second. Those of you that would be interested in participating in that can see me, I can give you the contact information. We agreed with the Stark County Regional Chamber of Commerce and the Pro Football Hall of Fame Committee to participate with them in the balloon launching and the event that they made use one of our fields at the park for that. We've signed, put that together. Someone had asked me a little while ago about that one big massive snowstorm we had in the one weekend, and how much does that kind of cost the city to deal with that, that snow emergency we had put in park and ban out. So one of the work back that, in working with the finance department to kind of work out the cost for the man-hours, and then working with my batter shell superintendent on the cost of materials and gasoline and all that kind of stuff, the man-hours turned out to be about twenty-four thousand dollars, and the cost for materials and salt and everything that went along with it was approximately another twenty-six thousand. So that particular event cost the city fifty thousand dollars. We'd like to thank Law Director Fox for putting together something on our radar for some additional training for police and fire and EMS. This is being sponsored by Wafar Mopaker Dubakar. It will be held Thursday, March fourteenth at nine A M. in the City Council Chambers. Sign of wisdom. I was waiting for it. The Stark County Health Department will have its annual meeting Thursday, March seventh at seven P M. I will be attending, but anyone that would like to go, I'll spread the joy. The Stark County Council of Governments is meeting tomorrow morning at, I'm sorry, tomorrow afternoon at five P M. in the Canton City Council Chambers. I'll be attending that. Also received some drawings for landscaping around the African Children's Facility, so if council members from that area that have had some inquiries in the past want to see me about that, I'll be happy to share it with you. Thank you.
How about the BIA, do you want to touch on that real quick?
Yes, thank you. Marty Van Gundy, who is our chief building official through SafeBuild, organized a meeting with the BIA Building Industry Association, and the purpose of which was to gain, gain their input on the processes that we use for certain types of applications, help with the permitting and the forms that are used, how we can, what information is relevant, what isn't. And they had about a two or three-hour working session that was fully packed over at their main office, and the result of it was a lot of good feedback on how we can make things even a little bit more efficient in that. It gave them a lot of insight to the problems that occurred in the past that they need to deal with. Dominic attended that as well.
Representative Council.
If I could just add something too. You know, when we look at, as we're trying to put together our permits department, so we've contracted with SafeBuild, which has really worked out very well for us so far, and, but the City of Canton, you know, they're running against the same challenges, so with their permit superintendent, they had contracted with John Dodish, who had served as our assistant chief building official. So they contracted with him part-time and then also with Rita Alvarez, who was our building, chief building official. So, you know, you have to be an architect or you have to be an engineer in order to serve in that position, and there's just not, you know, there's not a whole lot of qualified or large pool of candidates to serve in those positions. So the cities are resorting to, you know, either contracting part-time or contracting like we did with SafeBuild. So we're moving in the right direction as far as the city and the area.
Director Fias?
Well, first, I just wanted to follow up on some of Melanie's comments about audits. It's near and dear to my heart. Regardless of whether the state auditor does the audit or an outside firm, the state auditor always has jurisdiction over our annual financial audit. So they're actually the ones that are contracting with the firm. The auditor's office chooses to have their own staff do it, that's their discretion, or if they don't have enough space in their schedule, they contract it out. It's always the same financial statement audit. Each team may do things a little bit differently, but it's always an audit primarily of the financial statements. They may do some compliance-based testing, but it's a financial audit. As far as a legislative specific audit, I've never heard of anyone having that narrow of a scope on an audit. I'm not saying it's not out there, but I don't know at this point who would do something like that. I've never heard of the state auditor's office doing a specific audit, but just legislative process.
I can attest that two years ago and years prior to that, distinctly the auditors sitting in my office with specific questions about legislation, open meetings, public records, absolutely, they look at those things when they believe it's an issue that they need to ask some questions, and each one of those, they came back with no findings.
And it's because, again, it relates back to the financial statements, because as you see in the final committee, so many pieces of legislation have financial information in them, there's dollars in almost everything that you guys do, so that's where it ties right in. So just to follow up on that, any questions on that before?
Yeah, so what we're saying is the financial audit drives a legislation.
They do touch on that, yes, but it's not, you know, it's not a just singular focus on legislative process.
Okay, is there a way to look to see if there is such a?
I could certainly put some feelers out and see if I could.
Only because the residents have asked for it, I mean, I don't anticipate any problems, but sometimes it's good to have some, a third party involved. That way, it's third person's, hey, we're doing a good job, hey, you know, we can work on some things. There's always something to improve on, so I would support that. We can do some background, I appreciate it.
I can look into it, and one thing you run into too is, you know, every city that's a charter city is slightly different. We all have our own charters.
Sure, we have our own charters.
And anybody that would come in, would audit to what our rules are, not to, you know, statute or our rules. Anything else on that? Okay. The only other thing I have is just kind of a utilities billing update. As we've been talking about, we went through a new software system. Last week, while I was out of town, my staff really held strong, even though they were short a day of the week due to the windstorm, and got the bills out on our new system and a new look to the bill, so if some of you got your bills in the mail in the last couple of days. We had a couple glitches with it. Specifically, the one big one has been our senior residents and disabled residents who are on our homestead or our rate reduction program. That discount didn't get applied this month. We're still going to honor that, we're working right now to credit all those accounts, but we've had a lot of phone calls today on people saying, oh, my bill's higher than it normally is, but we will get that corrected within the next few days. So if you hear from any residents that have questions on their bill, please have them call, come in, or send us an email at utility@northcantonohio.gov. You also may have seen in your water bill a flyer that we put together with our nice water staff model gave, and this is just to let residents know that the automated meter reading program is coming, and staff is out in the field, and has been for the past several months, installing those reader boxes on the outside of homes. Most of the time, they won't need to come in your house, they'll just pop that on outside your house and be on their way. Just so residents are aware that you may see people working close to your home, nothing wrong with that, they're service department employees, they can provide identification if you ask them to do that, and that's all part of that system that will start to roll out over the summer.
And if I might add, just a note of how thorough the finance director is on this, I thought one day I had a great idea I ran over to tell Laura about it, and she had already thought about it, put it in place, it was already done. And it was just from our side of the building, we sort the mail, and we get, again, water bills, when they come in, it's a lot, and you have to, you had to look at every envelope to see if it's for utilities, for utilities. So Laura went ahead and changed the color of the envelopes. So there's a special envelope that comes back, and now we just know by color sorting, these are all going to utilities, and it's speeding it up much faster. Thank you.
Well done, well done, Mr. General.
That's all, thank you.
And Laura, thank you for showing us that flyer. I saw that a couple of days ago. That is another example of a great way that we communicate with our constituents, and the taxpayers. It kind of segues into a comment I want to make, which Chuck brought up during his comments regarding the meeting minutes. I've thought a lot about this, and, you know, I look back on what we've done, and I think we are at the forefront in the county, if not the state, as far as administration and council in communicating and being open with our procedures. We livestream meetings, you know, we audiotape our meetings, we do the verbatim minutes. We have a newsletter that we put out, I think, four times a year. We communicate through the water bill. We do a lot of it, and it got me thinking regarding verbatim minutes, you brought up, you know, you went back and looked at specific words that were spoken by whoever, I can't remember who you're talking about. You know, all of our neighbors, we are the last ones to do verbatim minutes, and there is an extreme cost to that as well. And I know this is not going to make you happy, but it is my intention to introduce legislation to move to a summary minute format and bring us into the twenty-first century. I know you're not going to like it, and I know some of the older folks that are used to the way they were done back in the sixties and the seventies aren't going to like that, but everyone's doing it. And, you know, if folks want to be able to go back and look at a meeting, they're archived on video. If they want specific, we can go back to the audio. If there was something that was specific, that was, you know, if there was a legal question or whatever, something absolutely had to be transcribed, we have the audio. But we got to bring us up to the twenty-first century, and by doing that, it's going to save a tremendous amount of money. I know you're shaking your head, I know you don't like it, I know it's change, and you really don't like the change. But I have, we have a fiduciary responsibility to taxpayers in the City of North Canton, and to spend thirty thousand plus, and I'm not just talking council, I'm talking Planning Commission and Zone Board of Appeals. I mean, we're, it's tens of thousands of dollars. Laura and I have had some conversation about that, we haven't really put a specific dollar amount on it, but it is, it's a sizable amount. It's a road, it's a road we can pave every year by taking that out, and you're still not losing anything. You can go back to a video archive and watch it. You can watch what we said. You can go back to the audio and listen to it, okay? So I know it's not what you want to hear after the comments you made in public speak, but I thought in fairness, I would mention that to you, that is my intent.
I knew it was coming.
Thank you, Mr. Osborne, you had your time. Now I've had my time. And to Pat's point, we need to appoint two council members to the CRA Housing Council. I believe you are on your way out, your term is expiring. Better act.
Yes. So, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
And unfortunately, because you're in a special meeting, you have to, you have to remain on the agenda. I'd hate to let you go through this and then have someone point out that if it's not a subject, you can't amend the, I can't amend this subject.
You can appoint him next week, we have some volunteers. If you could appoint them next week, we have some volunteers. Yeah. Sure. We're going to have to do it next week. I'm sorry, Patrick.
We can place those.
It's three days.
You don't know who they are, but.
It'll be three days before we can.
Yeah, are you coming? Are you, Mark, are you going to the other game? I'm just asking.
We'll talk about that later. We'll talk about that later.
It's a better schedule.
All right. Okay, well, uh, tho- those are my comments.
I'll, I'll make a motion that Mark and Charlie do it. I'm sorry, I, I don't work over there.
All right, Member Foles.
Thank you. Just to piggyback on the, uh, utility bill, and I think that, that is just a very professional statement that we sent. And we go back to the postcards, as I remember. And now you have a way to communicate with your constituents, our residents, for anything going on in the city. It's first class. It looks great. I did notice the red lettering on the envelope, so job well done. It's, it does offer a format for us to communicate special things that are going on or that we need to address with our, our water users. So, um, I think it's very important. That's all I can say.
Mr. Rafferty. A couple of things. First of all, um, good work with the chamber. I think it's very important that we work very closely with the chamber. Chamber is important that we're both going in the same direction. And to have incentives, right, Mr. Uh, Mr. Chuck? Um, incentives in pay, you know, for performance is very important. And I think they're in the, the same boat there too. So I'm really looking forward to that change and them being right in line and us right in line with them. Also, Pat and I met today with Walsh about our meeting on April 1st. And that is set for April 1st. And, and a couple of different things. We, we have a meeting at the Hall that we will have this time. Last time we were there, we had a regular council meeting. So we will be doing a meeting at the Hall. They would like to present some things ahead of time to show what Walsh is doing. They even have a couple of students, possibly exchange students that want us to say their experience in North Canton. And, and, and so that's kind of neat to see people coming in, some of the young folks. And, uh, I'm sure, and, uh, President Gerson, of course, will be there. And then in return, we may want to just, uh, we have a few things that we would probably explain, you know, how council meetings run, something, something like that ahead of time. So just a couple of things in hand, and then we'll do our, our meeting. So they seem to be in good, good, uh, format that they have live streaming there, so we won't need to bring in, um, you know, the, the school. And plus, it's the day after everyone gets back from the spring break as far as the school is concerned. So that might probably would have been a tough call. So that, just wanted to update you on that, uh, seems to be going forward. As far as the water bill thing and the insert, uh, that was great. Are we going to do, put that on the list possibly also?
We can, sure.
I think it's a good idea to do that. Everybody looks at their bill because some of them, um, just, you know, get it, uh, already paid, kind of take automatic pay. And as far as the minutes are concerned, I, I'm in favor of just going to what everyone else does. With the amount of money that we spend on something that is double and triple already looked at, we can, anybody can go. And I know change is, is not easy. Anything that really likes change is a baby in his diaper. I said change is not, is not, is, but in, for the most part, there's some growing things when people get used to it and it just moves forward. And we can save that amount of money and still have, you know, a place where people can go, several places where people can go to see what happened at meetings. I see no reason to, what, to triple, uh, repeat something. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Member Foles.
Let me respond to Chuck's comment. I think we all know, who sit around this table and those who sit in the audience, know that we have some serious issues in the clerk's office. I think in my private comments to many of you, uh, I've indicated that during the standing period, uh, we would have, uh, we would be unable to address many of these issues while we search for a clerk. And that search is underway. I think all of us, to varying degrees, appreciate how critically important that position is to our operation. So to those who are in the room and may be watching us online, I think it's important that they understand that we believe this is an important job. We have had citizens who have pointed out deficiencies, expressed concerns. Many of those are held by people in this room and around this dais. So it's not something that we take, like, the criticism's not something we take lightly, and we hope that we will address. Let me just, since you've raised the issue of minutes, I will approach this with an open mind, but I can tell you that I'm not confident that our minutes in the future will conform to the requirements of law. Yes, we can go back. We can listen to it or we can see it. But as soon as you can find it, I think all of us have to admit that this place does not run like a fine Swiss watch. Our minutes right now, for example, aren't even journalized. They're a file. God only knows if they're completely correct. So as we contemplate where we want to head in the future, let's all remember that we had a planning commission that couldn't even kick the minutes out and make them legal. And that was just months ago. Not too long ago, I had the, I had Mr. Fox run down something from, what, 2003? I needed to find out exactly what was said. We went to the Journal for it. It was important to our understanding of what was done with the Main Street Business District. Took him a couple of minutes, we got it. Actually, Tim emailed it to me. It was a critical part of our discussion, in my thinking, on where it was going to go. Does that happen often as I've been to, to Stephanie? No, it doesn't. Sometimes when you really need it, you need it. There are costs of doing business. I would only encourage this by not be penny wise and pound foolish. When we look at how we record what we do, we went back in that case 16 years because we had the Journal. I would hate to see us, I would hate to see us not provide that resource for future counsels. So, this again, I will approach this with an open mind, but as someone who's a historian, who's been around, I like something in paper because it's not subject to technological change. We're not watching videos on E-track cassettes or listening to. It's gone. I don't think anybody's got a cassette player for movies anymore. Get them on disc, and what happens when discs go away? Remember, we're keeping something that is going, has to stand, stand the test of time. I think that's what we missed the last time we, we, we went around and we, we walked off from transcripts for our, uh, our planning commission, zoning board of appeals. We weren't legal. We're getting done, they weren't legal. So I would say, you know, I know this is costly. I know it's expensive. I'll approach it with an open mind. Let's be really careful about what we do. And I think part of that assessment is to really understand how, how well this place actually operates. And I think we're going to have to take off our clothes and stand in front of the bear if we really can. But I think we really have to, we have to look at it. And we have to think about how future councils are going to work and function. I mean, are we providing the supervision? What are we doing? You know, I think it takes us to a whole range of issues. So again, I'll approach it with an open mind, but sure waterboarding. Not waterboard, waterboard. I think we need to be really cautious.
All right.
Thank you.
Member Keasley.
I just want to basically say thank you to Patrick for the, his work on the agreement. He did a great job.
Thank you. Move forward.
That's it.
Where?
Uh, I just, uh, you like the word exercise. I like the word collaboration.
There we go.
There you go. So, uh, I heard a lot of collaboration tonight. Everything from Rob and all the different grants and who we're working with to the YMCA and working on that, with Patrick and Laura and then the chamber. I do think that's important to work with the chamber downtown. And maybe they have a great partnership with the city of Canton and have done a lot collaboratively. And we will be the city forward, the Innovation District, um, the, this, this, this different CRAs and a lot of things. And so I think that's a good partnership. And we all can't be experts in everything we do, so we can move, move away and let someone else do it. And then the flags. I mean, the partnerships that you have created with just having that initiative is, is really, um, it's a big deal. So thank you for, for doing that. In looking at, uh, oh, this was me too. I was at the Y on Sunday and they were having a pickleball clinic. So many people came. I can't even tell you. All ages, people who had high school to, to college, my age older. And so, and they listed all the places and I said, hey, we're going to have one in North Canton. People were really, really excited. So when you talk about economic development and those people staying and playing, and, uh, they were really excited. There was a lot of restaurants around that. So that, that got me excited about our area. When I think about recordings too, um, and we've been here before. I think you sat in the audience at that point, Daryl, and we've, we've gone over this to see what's efficient and not. It's been difficult with looking, we've been on the committee looking at somebody to hire for that position because our clerks spent, I don't think I'm exaggerating, three days to do those verbatim minutes. You are probably the only one that goes back and looks at those verbatim minutes in, in historical format. And you even said in the time that you've been here, you looked at them once. I think Mark asked you that. And you said, I thought I wanted to have those. But the difference with you looking at them in 2003 versus now is there's an audio and a visual. So you may say, well, I believe what is in that red book. I hope that somebody copied them and listened to the verbatim minutes and got it right. But you believe that is law, right? I would rather see that visually and say, oh, that is actually what they said. And this is how they said it, this is how it sounded. This is what the interpretation was. So it's personal preference. And when you talk about how, you know, going from A-trac to disc, I am confident that we are keeping up with technology and keep changing the formats as we continue to do and as other entities have done. And I guess, you know, I do know a lot of other people in, in other areas and no one's taking off their clothes. Let's just be clear about that. But, um, we are doing a really good job here and we do get a lot of accommodations. We are picky about what we do and that's great. I don't think anybody else holds their council to the degree of, um, the degree of perfection that other people hold us to as, as any other entity does. And I think we do a really good job trying to get there. And we're always going to strive for, for better work. And that's what we're doing. And we're managing that. And I think we have to do a better job and put in all the great things that we are doing. But to look at that and look at the expense and look at who we want to hire, and we've talked about this, Daryl, is we can't get the kind of worker that we want as a clerk who's going to be thoughtful in their discussions, uh, maybe be creative in their approach, have research ability, have a voice where we actually say, so what do you think? If they are doing verbatim minutes for three solid days a week? That's a lot, and that's a lot of money. And Laura, you ran some numbers. For, just for us to have the verbatim minutes, it was $30,000 plus just for council, right?
To have the court reporter.
Have the court reporter.
For every council, yeah, committee meeting.
That includes zoning or planning.
Correct. That was about $20,000 to $25,000.
Right.
Roughly.
And board of control and water.
Right. I guess I wonder, like you said, like, how could we, how could we get it right? Well, how do all the other entities get it right? I hold us to a higher standard than many other places. So I believe we could get it right with summary minutes and, uh, and could make it effective as well as having the live streaming video. And, uh, yeah. That's it.
That was, that was a lot of stuff to talk about.
Member Foles.
Oh, you have collaborations.
We're collaborating. Okay, so I think with what everybody talked about with the recordings, I've always looked forward thinking, uh, just like the spaceship just tirelessly landed to the satellite, I mean, without even a person in it. It's pretty impressive. But anyhow, um, I would say that I'm sure there's experts out there that can tell us, you know, looking forward, you know, 50 or 100 years is the book format, the best way, or is there another way? So I would say just get their opinion and then go with it. I'm open minded. Uh, but what I wanted to talk about real quick is, uh, since we were working on the flags and finding donors, I had an opportunity to speak at the Lions Club, speak with, um, the Chamber and Rotary. So I had a chance, I ran to Mark the other day. They had a, um, a mixer at Main Street. And it was sort of like a new membership type thing. And Paul's going to be the new president, Paul Bydick? Or how, how you pronounce his last name?
Bydick.
Bydick. So anyhow, um, he was saying, after we had a conversation about some of the things going on in the city, and it always comes back to the communication, you know, uh, the Chamber, the churches, the Boy Scouts, Walsh University, Lions Club, Rotary, they all, they all want to be part of our community. They all want to do something. And I think it's, it, it's important for us to make sure we're communicating to the constituents. And I think as a council, we should have a membership to Rotary if we don't and just rotate the different meetings with some of us periodically so it's not a burden on anybody. Uh, because they were so grateful to hear some of the things going on with Hoover, the Main Street Business District, and some of the businesses that were, we have a lot of, uh, business contacts now that want to come take a look at North Canton. So now we're putting the cart before the horse or vice versa. We're trying to figure out, you know, from a, a business standpoint, how to update our codes and, and to do these things that are necessary so that we're, you know, positioned to attract those new businesses. And one of the big things is like with the Chamber going out talking to the small businesses, that's their job. That's what they should be doing. The Chamber and Rotary, uh, you know, I'm just suggesting we probably should get a membership. I don't mind going a couple of times, you know, we rotated out and we let them know because they want to be part of our community. They have a lot of money. They want to spend money in the community where they live, work, and play. And, um, so I think we should, we're missing a gold opportunity. So I just say we continue pounding this communication because again, even the people out here, if you think about what they're complaining about, it's because they don't really know what we're doing all the time. So we need to expose that more and maybe they would be happier to understand what's really going on. I mean, I know when I sat out there, I really second guessed what was going on up here too. But now I see the direction we're going. We're trying massively, get so many things up to speed. And, um, I just think it needs to be communicated better. That's all I have.
Good.
Thank you. And, uh, Tim, just one thing. We could put, um, a special notation on next week's meeting, appointment of two CRA Housing Council members, council members.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then our, uh, remaining March meeting schedule. Uh, next Monday, March 11th, we'll have our city council, regular city council meeting. Following Monday, the 18th, will be a committee of the Hall. March 25th will be the, uh, public hearing with a public input regarding the Main Street Business District. That'll be 6:30 PM, followed by regular council meeting at 7:00. And as Mark mentioned, uh, we will go into April. April 1st will be the meeting at Walling College. The last one we had there was, was really nice. I, uh, recommend you, if you have the time, to, uh, to be there for that. So, uh, that concludes the legislative agenda. At this time, may I have a motion in the second to adjourn into executive session? This is to consider the appointment of a city employee and confirm the law director concerning disputes involved in the city that are subject of imminent court action.
Second.
Member?
Member Foltz.
Yes.
Serratt.
Yes.
Revolt.
Yes.
Keezly.
Yes.
Ware.
Yes.
Fonte.
Yes.
Peters, yes. Seven members, yes, we are adjourned into executive session. Great job, we'll see you tomorrow.